Okay, I want to call this meeting to order, please. If everyone would stand, I must say the pleasure going to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for everyone that has attended this meeting on April 1st, 2025. I would like to, has everyone had an opportunity to read the March 4th meeting minutes? Has everyone received them in their email and wrote them? Would someone like to make a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? So moved. Do we have any mail? Pardon me?
Mike's, Mike is off.
Mike is what?
The mic?
Yeah.
Poor Mike?
His mic's off, yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
No, he voted or not?
Yeah, he's getting it.
Yeah?
It's good, it was our question, I'm sorry.
Oh, on the, on the vote, I, I couldn't hear you vote to approve the minutes of the meeting.
Are you a yea or nay on the minutes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, is there any mail? This is time, okay. County attorney, is there anything that we need to be aware of?
No, other than I'm trying to get it on that screen, so we'll see how that will figure out in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Reports, are there any committee reports that you would like to report on? Are there, we have Dale Strong, one of the commissioners as a representative. Is there anything you would like to say this evening, Dale?
I can if you like.
Sure.
Good evening, good to see everybody. Today, we opened bids for the 2025 community crossings paving projects. We received four bids. And the lowest bid we received was just a little bit more than our total that we're applying for. I'm really glad to see that because we're applying for the, the maximum $1.5 million of assistance in the state. And since our lowest bid came in, just a little over $1.5 million, we shouldn't have to cheapen any of those paving projects this year to get the maximum benefit out of it. So that's, I'm really encouraged by that. So that'll be several more miles of new pavement this summer. We don't know yet when they may get started, but the Butler Fairman currently has the proposals. And once they review them, they'll come back and make a recommendation as what will be at the actual best bid. And I expect to take care of that at our next meeting later in the morning.
Good.
So.
We're filling those in ourselves, Dale. There's two cars that fell in just about street level now.
Okay. That's good to know, Bob.
Yeah, yeah.
Dale, do you know what streets already you want to pave?
Yeah. I don't have it right here in front of me, but as I recall, we're going to do 450 West from county, from State Road 44 north up to 200 north. And School Road from, from Sprinklersville Road north to, I think that's 150, 150 north, about there, right? At the corner of the, the old Waterloo School. And County Road 325 west from 700 north to 1,000 north. That's just north of, uh, north and east of Bentonville, just, just north of Manlove Park up to Wayne County line. And to the south is.
I didn't mean to say, what about the South people?
Yeah. Ziegler Road from State Road 121 over to Gray Road. There goes four. All of them had a Pacer rating of two out of a scale of one to 10. So they're getting pretty bad shape. So we have no shortage of roads in need of work, you know? So.
How many total miles are you getting with that?
Maybe part.
What's the total miles you're going to be able to cover?
I don't even recall that right now. It's several miles that are all totaled. So we've got, you know, one to the east, one to the west, one to the north, and one to the south. So, but they, they were all chosen on the basis of need. And of course, traffic counts has an effect on that, too. Some roads are very heavily traveled and they get a little bit more attention by everyone, you know? So we'll, we'll know more about that later. In a couple of weeks, we'll know for sure which contractor will be doing the work. Also, we received good news, too, that Kelly Van Meter was in and told us that we had received, been awarded our SEED grant, you know, WTHGIS that we had applied for. And we finalized the agreement on that. So we'll be awarded $29,665 for that mapping, GIS mapping, that will benefit not only 911, but other departments also. It is a reimbursable grant, so we have to spend the money first, and then once the, when the work is done, they will reimburse us for it. So, also, we okayed the, hire a new person in the assessor's office, Ashley Whipper, new employee there. And we also okayed the hiring of Cassie Bright in the clerk's office as a voter registration clerk, and that was a part-time position. And, I think that was about it. We heard reports, 2024 reports from probation in the sheriff's department. I'm not going to upstage those guys that are here, and they're going to tell you all about their 2024 reports here in a minute. So that's about all I need to say.
About the women's facility? The women's facility?
We expect that to be done this month. There's just a little bit of touchy enough to do right now. I was just over there a while ago. The signage on all the doors and everything will be taken care of Wednesday of this week, they tell me. Final cleanup. After that, just mopping the floors and making everything look real nice. There's very, very few things yet to be done over there. Then, of course, once, once they say, okay, we're done, DLZ will come in, go through the punch list on every item, make sure everything, every bump one's in agreement, that everything is acceptable. We'll be good to go. Now, the outside is still going to need some attention. I was just over there this afternoon with our highway department superintendent, taking a look at the parking lot and the paving around the area. He and his crew are going to be looking at that this week. And it is very possible that our equipment is just too big to do an area that small. So we'll, I'm going to try to determine this week whether or not we can have our highway department do the parking lot area there, or whether we'll have to have an outside contractor that specializes in smaller jobs going to do it. So right now, that's going to be up in the air. But with so much, you know, little big holes been cut in it and that sort of thing, it definitely has to be repaved and resurfaced. So that'll spruce up the outside looks quite a bit.
Good.
Okay?
Thanks, sir.
That's good news. Thank you, Dale.
Good seeing you all.
Thank you, thank you. Right there, are no transfers or additional reductions? There's no 144s, any old business that we need to? I don't think there's anything on the agenda, new business? Zach, do you want to give your?
Annual jail report. I emailed this to you guys, but give me a copy just so we can come over it real quick. We do this every year, and the state requires it, so basically just gives you all the things that we've done in the jail that are last year. On the third page where the graphs are, you'll notice that Ryan Sigger's report does not have graphs on the graph, but, our admissions, the number of people we booked in are down just barely. But what's, sort of stands out is the average daily population. 2022 is almost 140, a year after that is almost 130, and we're at 116 for last year. So that just continues to go down. People are staying in jail less time. This year so far, we're, I think it was 106 for 107. So that trend is just continuing to go down. Less people in jail, less money we have to spend.
Does that do the new program?
I like to think that it does. They haven't given me the numbers on the recidivism rate yet, but the IRX program has to have something to do with it because it's just going down and down and down. So they're helping people stay out of jail. And when they get out, they try to find them jobs, they find them rehab, they help them get back with their family, driver's license, all that. So we still got a couple that just like to come back to jail, but for the most part, that number hasn't went down.
And it looks like in the daily population, that where it's gone down is males, not necessarily females?
That trend has stopped this year because the female population, after we built a female center, it's going down, too. So at one point, we're at 30, 40 females, and we're below 20 now. So we may have to fill that place up with other inmates from other counties or DOC. We can become DOC holding because the next thing there is Department of Corrections money that we earn. That's for holding prisoners that are sentenced to DOC. $264,000 is what we made last year, and we sort of make that amount most times. About every year, it's around $200,000, $300,000, so.
How much do you get paid per inmate?
$37.50, I think, is the rate that they've negotiated. So for every day that somebody's there, it's $37.50. The top 10 charging statistics, it's always about the same. Warner Rest, that's just third tip here, is probation violations, things like that. That's always a high number. Dilling, that's got something to do with the job that Dan and Joey and Patrick Malone at the, used to be at the city, now he's with us. They, they hit it pretty hard last year, so that's why that number went up. And then OVWI, battery, syringe, it's all basically the same charges that it has been for the last 10 years. Staffing analysis, jail inspector always wants me to put that in there. It's been the same forever. We need five jail officers, five or six jail officers. With the women's center opening, we've hired for that already, trying to get them trained. So as soon as it opens, we can be ready. So that we've had that extra help in the jail, which has really helped out. And you'll see that in overtime down there. We spent about $30,000 less than the year before, just because we've had the help in the jail, extra employees, which has really helped out. Transports, again, it's about the same. I think last year was, or 2023 was around 75. This year, or 2024, that was around 70,000. The kitchen, $2.12 per mil is what we're averaging for the year. That's, that's fairly cheap. You really can't go out and get something for $2 to feed yourself. So that includes the food and the employees that work in the kitchen. Medical, it's a higher number this year. That's just because you guys gave me an additional last year to get us caught up because we were billing for year, the year prior, and it was just not making sense. So we wanted to get caught up, so now our billing is completely caught up. And the last paragraph of the medical statistics, Quality Correctional, the reason we mainly went with them is because they do a thing called bill scrubbing. It's sort of like if you have county insurance, it's what they do. Off-site medical, when we have to send somebody up to the hospital, there was four people that went to the hospital this weekend. So we get those bills, we send those bills to Quality, and they scrub them. State statute says we only have to pay Medicaid rate plus 4%, and they make sure that that is billed correctly. So $401,000 is what we revealed. We ended up only having to pay $64,000.
That's great.
So they, they scrub, and they're like our insurance company. They go in and if you overcharge us for something, we're not paying it, and they negotiate it. They also make sure that if an inmate stays in the facility for over 24 hours, they give them signed up for HIPAA insurance because an inmate isn't qualified for insurance unless they're at the hospital for over 24 hours. So if they do that, they make sure they're signed up for it, and they bill it that way, so the county doesn't get stuck with that bill. Programs and services, it's the same things we've done for years. GD, church counseling, therapeutic community that's put on by the workplace center. And then the IRX program, again, I think that's the main reason we're seeing a decrease in our population. A lot of maintenance projects were completed last year, the control room floor, a lot of painting, the padded cell was fixed, the airhammers were cleaned, and they're working pretty good now. There's a lot of work done. But as you can see, unfunded maintenance projects, there's still a lot of work to do. Inmate showers, they're pretty rusty, and we're constantly fighting mold. The cell door glass, Jarboe's been putting Lexan in instead of glass, and it's holding up pretty good, but he's slowly trying to get to all of them, and eventually he will, but he's got a lot of stuff to do.
Why do you use metal if it's going to rust?
In the showers, the doors, the door frames, the doors, it's just metal, and it's old. We've taken all the doors off, and now we hang curtains, but the door frame is just metal that's old. And Jarboe has a plan for that also, because we're just waiting on the women's center open so we can move blocks around. We'll have two empty blocks for a while, and he can go in and do what he has to do, fix everything, and then we'll move people around and fix two more blocks. Yeah, that's a lot of our problem, is all that metal is just becoming rusty and old and falling apart. New camera system, our cameras are at least 20 years old, and technology has improved quite a bit. We can still see what inmates are doing, but sometimes it's not high quality. So that would be nice if we could get new cameras, but again, they're working, they're just not the greatest. The body scanner, I put this in last year, too. When we got it, we went the cheap route because the grant wouldn't cover the dual view that they call. So it takes somebody knowing what they're looking for to find something in somebody, but we're still finding stuff all the time. But if you had the dual view, which was another $125,000, of course, then it's easier to see stuff. The sprinkler system, an inmate that, because they're becoming old and rusty, that you're able to, they're, they're able to break those if they want to. We have a flood in the block a few months ago because an inmate broke the sprinkler. Just something that needs to be worked there. And then our doors and intercom system, the doors, Jarboe's got a plan for that also. Once we make some room in our jail, the inmates take books and slam the doors because they got nothing else to do, and it sort of bends them off the hinges, and he has to go in and try to fix it, and it's just becoming a problem. So he's got a plan to fix that also. Any questions? All right. We also, today, we talked with the, I talked with the commissioners. We're looking at a company to come in and take over chemicals in the jail, toilet paper, paper towels, trash bags, all that stuff. They're claiming, it's Centost is the company, they're in Wayne County Jail, Randolph County Jail, and Henry County Jail, I think, and they're claiming they can save us a ton of money. So we're going to get all this stuff to the commissioners, and hopefully we can make that change in the jail and the courthouse, just so we can try to save some money from what we're doing now. Any questions?
You said the camera system's old. Are there any grants available for that, or?
It's hard to get.
And what it costs?
Michael was putting numbers together, but there's 60-some cameras over there. It's just sort of a wish list that we've, grants are hard to find for jails, law enforcement. You can get grants for toys, like we got a side-by-side out of a grant, but you really don't need it, but it was, it's nice to have when you need it. But getting grants for employees or equipment is sometimes hard. But if anybody can find a grant, that's wait, and if there is one, he can find it probably, so.
Is there a way to take that and do it like stages?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yep. Good?
Good job, yes.
Thank you.
Ryan, do you want to, your report? Yep.
See your chart.
Where's your chart at?
I have my chart, I won't bore you.
It's not as thick either.
Yeah, I know, I'm not trying to write both of you here. So just like with Sheriff, this is a report that the state requires of us, and our DOC grant also requires as well. We spent our entire DOC grant last year $130,935. We also expended $72,353.70 in user fees. Those are fees we collect from the probationers that we can then use to pay for things that they, my department needs that doesn't have to be funded by the county, you know, all of our supplies, training, travel, any, any kind of equipment for our department, office furniture, we pay for all those sort of things ourselves, so those come out of that part of the budget. We collected $43,628.64 in restitution. That's from all sources. They go through the clerk's office. That's for, you know, victims of the crimes that have been committed in Vada County. 12 full-time staff, we supervise 1,263 individuals this year. They may have been on probation all 365 days, or they may have been on probation one day that year. It's just how the system runs that. We conducted 5,265 appointments. This number is actually down slightly from last year, a few hundred appointments, because the court actually allowed us to do some non-reporting probation for our low-risk misdemeanor offenders that we don't have to waste time on. We can put those resources towards high-risk offenders, dangerous offenders, offenders who need extra supervision due to substance abuse, that maybe we could spend more time with them to try to get them on the road to recovery. It's an evidence-based practice to try and put our focus on where it needs to be and not where it doesn't. We wrote 86 pre-sentence investigations. That's Kara Snyder's job. She does all our pre-sentence investigations for the court. Those are level five felonies and up. It's a, depending on how much criminal history the person has, that's a 30-page-plus report that she generates for each person before they're sentenced to the circuit court. And some level six felonies out of Superior Court will request them as well to help with sentencing decisions. We collected $86,165.15 in user fees. $17,851 was the admin fee that is, goes directly back into County General by statute. Our annual operating cost was $1,148,452.76. I decided to do the math this year to see, I hear Zach talking about daily cost all the time for, for inmates, $37.50, whatever it is. So I ran those numbers for us. I looked at our average monthly probationers, how many we have on per month, divided that out, and per probationer per day is $4.93 in Vada County. So much more affordable than having someone incarcerated is having someone placed on probation, or if we were to ever have a pre-trial release supervision, community, you know, community service supervision, things of that nature. So we're trying to do our part to be as efficient and cost-effective as we can. Our top five offenses, just like with the sheriff's department, it's almost always the same. OVWI is our big thing. We get a lot of those. It's a quick plea, most of us, they can attest, year probation, they take it, they go. Possession of methamphetamines, possession of an narcotic drug, unlawful possession of a syringe, and domestic battery are our top five. Last year, I think it was very similar. It just seems to be the trend that we have here. Our average caseload for the year was 113. The suggested caseload is 40 to 60, so we're about double where we need to be on the high side. A lot of departments are that way, some aren't. It's just where we're at right now. You know, we take whoever the court sends to us, and we'll supervise them for as long as they need to be supervised. We administered 509 drug screens, 316 of those were positive. I always think to myself, well, they're almost always positive, but then you have to think that we're pretty good at knowing who needs to be screened and who doesn't. You know, you don't screen, you know, people who aren't on drugs. You know, you're not going to waste that resource screening them over and over and over again, or people who are in long-term recovery. I'm not going to waste my screen on somebody who I know in the last year and a half has put on 40 pounds and looks great. I know what people look like when they come into us, when they, when they're in the depths of their addiction, and we've really got a good staff who knows not to waste those resources because those screens cost us money. We charge for them. You know, we've got about a 50-50 shot if we get any of that money back, so we try to keep that, you know, screening who needs to be screened. We have done a lot of things this year as far as our accomplishments that I wanted to notate. We're on the Drug Court Board, the, we have people who represent us on the Drug Coalition, the Corrections Board. We participate, the Child Protection Team. We are on the IRX Advisory Board, the local J-RAC, and then the School Safety Committee. We conducted 276 home visits, that's boots on the ground. We knock on doors, we try to confirm every address of every person who comes on probation to make sure they live where they say they live. And then we completed 343 pre-trial assessments. Every person that's booked into jail that is still there, by the time we get to the office in the morning, is assessed for their, it goes into bond eligibility, and it basically tries to assess what the risk of this person, if they're, say, OR, or at least on the low bond, will they show up for court? And the court has to take that into consideration when they have their initial hearing. We're handling that. Some places have their own department that handles that kind of thing. They do post-release supervision before conviction as well. Maybe someday they can figure there are grants available for that, if that's something, you know, the courts want to move towards. That would be another way to get people out of his jail, and also if you go books for payments for medical and food and all that kind of stuff that we wouldn't have to spend. That's the long and short of it. We did get approval from the commissioners today to apply for the DSC grant, again, for 2026. I asked for about an additional $245,000 more than we usually get. I'm trying to fully fund my two POs that I already have, plus an additional two probation officers, and just bring all those numbers up so that it would alleviate your costs for us.
Appreciate that.
Pretty much, yeah, all I've got. We're hoping to hear back. With the way everything is right now, with the new governor and their, their bi-annual budget, I don't know how that's going to go. I'm not a, yeah. I know enough about numbers to understand that's not looking super promising for big additionals, but we can pray.
Are there ever any probation adjustments?
Adjustments in what way?
So you got five here probation, the guy's done his act cleaned up, he's working. The guy's got his hat cleaned up, he's working, he's got a family, he's passing all the tests.
Yes, we can do early terminations. We generally make them serve at least one year, just to make sure that they'll be okay. They have to complete their special conditions if they're ordered to do any kind of rehabilitation, community service, restitution, things of that nature. And they have to be caught up on their fees with us, up to date. I don't make them pay the whole five years if they're going to get off, just up to the day of their early termination. And we get, we'll sign off on it, prosecutor's office will sign off on it, and then the judge finally will make that ultimate decision. We do have quite a few who qualify for that every year. You know, it's nice to see, I mean, we're a limited resource. You don't want to spend it where you don't need to. If someone's actually made a genuine change and done well, I am all for cutting them loose early if we can accommodate that. So we can, I wish we could do it more, but that's, sadly, it's not up to me. You know, this is a lead the horse to water, see if it drinks or not kind of situation for that.
Great report. Is there OVW one or I?
Yeah.
Do you think that's a national norm?
Oh, yeah, it's just, I mean, it's easy pickings. I mean, we've got some, and I see that number going up in the years to come with all the new officers we have that are so hot to trot out on the streets, patrolling, stopping cars, you know, traffic. That's, I mean, it's the young guys get it. And, you know, half are, between the sheriff and the city police, are these under 30 or right around 30, young guns, ready to roll kind of guys. You know, you see it every day. I look through the police reports, and it's traffic stop, traffic stop, traffic stop, traffic stop, traffic stop. They're just on and on and on. So that's a good thing, though. You catch a lot of bigger fish that way. Starts out of the taillight out, and ends up with, you know, a kilo of cocaine or something crazy. So we've had a lot of cases like that, too. Yeah, I'd say that's probably a national one.
Great report. Thank you. Even without the.
The, I'll put some graphs in next year just so you can say I don't have.
I'll show him now.
Yeah, he'll teach me.
Okay, is there any other new business, any reports that anyone wants to give? Okay. If not, patron concerns, is there anyone here that would like to speak? Okay, if there is no one else, then we're going to call this meeting to adjourn. If someone would like to make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So done.